Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. And first item on the agenda is President's Report, and I just want to take the opportunity to wish all of our students and our parents, our faculty, our administration, staff very happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and another, and a healthy and happy New Year next year. And I would also like to thank my fellow board members for all their dedication to helping make this and continue to make this one of the most outstanding schools in the United States. So with that, I will turn it over to Roy. You have a few brief -- I'm sorry? Oh, we have the minutes. We have to approve the minutes from the last meeting. I think it was November 16th. Do I have a mo -- we have a motion, or a second? Motion and a second. Do I have any changes, corrections, comments on the minutes?
No.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. That motion passes? Okay.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I also want to extend my best wishes for great holiday times and happy holidays to all, and best wishes for an amazing 2018 that we have to look forward to aheads. It's a busy time in our school. We've had holiday sings and winter concerts, and there's another one tomorrow evening for the high school orchestra and choral concert, so we're looking forward to seeing that. But it's really, truly a magical time in our schools right now, and I want to thank everybody for their participation and the good work that are going, that is going on for us. I'm going to get right into Item C at the moment and invite Dr. Ketke up to provide everybody --
Oh, I wanted to --
Well, you wanted to do that first? I didn't know what you wanted to do.
Oh, you're going to do that before Facility?
Yeah, I thought so. Because kids here, but you can do this first if you want.
Um, how long is that?
That's probably a bit of a time. See, I'll do this first.
Okay, we have Facilities on the agenda first, so I think this will be short.
Never mind.
Right. Thank you very much.
Sorry. Yeah, we want to do a talk, just a little bit about the Capital Plan Project update.
So I'm just going to make a couple of comments about our proposed referendum that people know is out there, and I believe there's a lot of confusion about it. And I want to start off by saying in introduction, our board has a tough job. We have to balance the priorities of our three constituencies, which are, of course, our students, our faculty, administration, and staff, and our village residents, our taxpayers. Most important, of course, obligation is to our students and the education of our students, and we have to ensure that this is an environment where our students can excel and are prepared for the future. Our facilities are very important to creating, to helping create that environment. You know, this is no easy task. I've read where experts say that 65 percent of our elementary school students will have jobs that don't exist today. We can't, cannot sit still and pretend that we can teach the same way we've done in the past, and we haven't done that. We've made great innovations in teaching in our school. And, for example, for all of us that spend all that time memorizing things, kids now can have, they have Siri and Google at their fingertips, you know? So it's a, it's a new world for teaching and collaborating and innovation space that we need to be competitive with other schools around us. Another important constituency, of course, is our faculty and staff and administration. These are our professional educators. These are the ones teaching our kids. They're developing the forward-looking strategy and curriculum and preparing our kids for the future. And point I want to make, our third constituency is, of course, our taxpayers, our residents. And we know that the taxpayers, as we and the board, we're all taxpayers, we all want to pay the lowest possible taxes and have the highest possible real estate values. We all know there is a direct correlation of real estate values and the quality of our school. We all remember why we moved here. And nothing will reduce the real estate values faster than letting the quality of the school decline. From a tax standpoint, over the last six years, from a keeping taxes low point of view, our average increase has been around 1 percent a year in tax levy from the school. In addition, now with the Kensington condo projects, I think we are expecting that the tax levy for individual residents will decrease by about 1 percent. We'll get more revenues from them, but we don't get those revenues. They reassess and revalue all the properties based upon that. So our tax levy will actually decrease by 1 percent because of that, and netted in whatever else we do. This leads me to our plan referendum. And I know, as I said, there's been confusion about this. Our last big referendum was $30 million in around 1995 or 1996, and that was for the Sea Wing. Since then, we've done a $2 million referendum after the flood in 2007. We did the $835,000 referendum for the Flood Mitigation Project, and we did a $4 million bond referendum for the auditorium, and we all know how that turned out. Thankfully, we have Foundation and PTA. We have unbelievable commitments from unbelievable community here to help us. Foundation assisted, and along with private donors, to help us with our fabulous auditorium. And PTA, for example, is paying for the renovation of our library project, and both also, Foundation gives grants to help us enhance the quality of the school from year to year, and PTA supports us in so many ways. From a Hays Field standpoint, for those of you who didn't mention that, we paid for that out of our own funds. So we have had very few referendums. Essentially, the, if you take away the flood, and we know what happened with the auditorium, how that came out, we've had, basically, haven't had a referendum since 1995. For as long as I've been on the board, and this is my sixth year on the board, we have been strategically thinking about the year 2021 for a new referendum. And the reason for that is that the Sea Wing bonds, that debt service is fully amortized and comes off the books in 2020. So our thought was, if we can wait and delay a lot of these projects and group it into a bond referendum for 2021, there would be no increase in taxes. So we have been talking about a tax-neutral bond referendum for a long time. Now, we're not oblivious to what's going on in Washington, and that it's going to have an impact on the state, but we still think that, you know, this is the right thing to do for us and the right time to do it. We really can't wait. We are so, we are long overdue in addressing the required maintenance and improvement in our 100-year-old building. I mean, we have crumbling masonry, roof and ceiling repairs. I'd like the students could get up and reel this stuff off better than any of us. That should not be deferred any longer. We have rusted-out pipes in the restrooms. We have, as I said, roof repairs that need to be fixed. We do have a health office that was forced into a small area after a flood, which is now anything but healthy. We get 10, something like 10,000, what do we say, visits?
9,000.
9,000 visits a year, and people are sitting on top of each other, sick people are sitting on top of each other. We, we have a new program to, a new vision for our guidance center, and we're having a study to try to improve the guidance center. That also was pushed into a small area after a flood, but it's, frankly, it's suboptimal, almost embarrassing compared to some of our competitor schools, for our students and the college admission directors that visit us. We have kids that eat at all kinds of times and all kinds of rooms around the school because they don't have the cafeterias necessary. And the kids, our kids don't have areas to collaborate, so when our high school students need to collaborate and break out into special project rooms, which we have always do when we go to conferences and things, they wind up doing it in hallways. We need to do, we need to redo Chambers Field. We've had other teams balking at even playing on it, so it's overextended its use, so we need to do that as soon as possible with a more environmentally friendly field that's -- and we need, obviously, new playground for our, for our young children. If we were able to, if we were able to withstand the flooding we've had in the past, we need three more, three additional pumps, and those cost a lot of money. So there are a number of things in here, and like I said, this is, there is no way for us to be able to pay for these things and to maintain this building, 100-year-old building, with operations, and particularly with a 2 percent cap when we've had increases of about 1 percent a year. So doing nothing is not an option. A lot of people have said, what will this cost if we don't do anything? Well, I can tell you, it's, first of all, it's tax-neutral, and that could be an increase, but if we didn't do anything, which is not, again, I can't imagine that that's an option, it would be about $463 on a million-dollar assessment, which is about 3 and 1/2 percent of school taxes, or probably about 2.3 percent roughly, back of the envelope, on full taxes for a million-dollar assessment. Again, as I said, we're not oblivious to what's going on in Washington. This is, by the way, again, if I repeat, will be ineffective in 2021, not now. And I do know that none of us was really sure what the impact of this new law will be, but most of us, as we said in the past, unfortunately, we felt like we were subject to alternative minimum tax. I know everyone will be talking to their tax advisors about this, but it turns out for most people, the effect isn't as great as what we would think if you just took your, you know, state and local income taxes and property taxes and said they're no longer deductible, to the, except for the extent of $10,000. So this is, this is going, this is very important to the board. We, we're taxpayers too. We don't want to pay any more taxes than we have to pay. We've been elected into this role. We feel the same way everyone else does, but I do think the board has a very clear view of what really needs to be done. We need to continue to maintain our standing as one of the best schools in the United States. And, and so with that, you know, we're going to move forward, we're going to continue to communicate more about this. It's not, you know, we haven't, we haven't finalized everything to the, to the dollar yet on everything, but we will continue to do that and be communicating with you. But I wanted to at least provide some clarity, if I could, some very high-level clarity, if I could, because there are a lot of questions going on about whether we are just, oh, oh, we just have an opportunity now to do a tax-neutral bond, so let's just throw a bunch of stuff in there and, you know, and, you know, put a swimming pool in the back. It's, uh, these are things we've delayed. As I said, we've been delaying these projects for a very, very long time, and it's very necessary that we, that we do this because there's no other way that we're going to be able to do it unless we, if we had to do it through operations, we'd have to, you know, vote for, go over the cap, which I'm sure no one would vote for, and then it would require cutting people, cutting headcount, which is our faculty. And so to do that, you're talking about severe degradation of the quality of the school at that point. So that's what we're dealing with as a board, and again, board is very appreciative of everybody's thoughts and input on this, as we go through this, but I wanted to at least provide that overview.
Great.
Do we have any, any other comments from anybody on? Did we have any other presentations on this, or no?
No, no other presentations on this. I just want to emphasize --
Later, we're going to do the other.
Yeah, the other part. We have a couple of resolutions related to the bond you get on later on in the agenda, but I just want to emphasize again, to Jeff's point, we look forward to communicating a lot more information after the holiday break. We'll be scheduling another meeting with our Community Advisory Committee very shortly after the break to review the projects, the impacts, and tighten everything up once again. So you can look forward to a lot more information after we come back in January.
Again, if I, I'll give you one more number for those, in 2021, it'd be about a net effect of 1.4 million. Again, it'll be neutral, but if we didn't do anything, it would be 1.4 million less on probably, at that time, around a $50 million budget. So we're talking 3.3 point something and change in total for the budget at that time. So Mara, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of you, but...
It's a great transition into why we like coming to work every day and why we feel we're one of the top districts around, and Mara's going to talk to us a little bit about some of the curriculum work that has been going on, because we really haven't had much in the way of curriculum presentations, but I, obviously, it's very, very important to, to what we do and how we do our work, and Mara will kick us off. I know she has some students who are going to come up and present some really exciting information and stuff that they've been working on.
I do, thank you. So it's my pleasure tonight to talk about one of the dispositions of our Bronxville Promise Innovation and some of the curriculum work that we have been doing around that area. Tonight, we will be talking about work that is in process, so these are not fully formed pieces of curriculum and/or student products, but we will be hearing from some of our students tonight as they begin to think about engaging in the process of innovation, and hopefully, if time permits, we can hear from them again in the spring to see how some of this work ended up. This is a quote from Sir Ken Robinson, "Creativity is the process of having original ideas that have value. It's a process, it's not random." We have, as a faculty, organized about 20 educators across the district K-12, immersed ourselves in some study about what, what does it mean to be innovative, what are the skills necessary, and we strongly believe that we can teach kids a process for being innovative, that this is not, you know, reserved for the random geniuses and outliers of the world, but this is actually a process that can be taught and students can go through to increase their capacity and the ability to innovate. Just to speak a little bit about our curriculum process, we began in the summer, in June and August, to define what it means. And again, this was done through a lot of, you know, conversations about literature around innovation and its importance. Based on our definition and the skills that we felt students needed to have and practice to be innovative, we engaged in curriculum design and assessment design. And we actually just had the consultant who's helping us with this back last week to meet with the teachers one-on-one, as well as meet with me, to give some feedback on their curricular designs in this area. We will begin to pilot that work now and throughout the spring and give students feedback as to helping them grow as innovators and strengthening their work. And then in June, we get back together and we show all the student work across the district that aligns with innovation, and then we look at the student work to see if it evidences the outcomes that, and skills that we had originally defined, and if not, we redesign curriculum and/or redesign our definition. So some of the work that has come out of this and will be implemented this spring with students is in our elementary school. We have several classes who are going to work to redesign some aspect of classroom life that is identified as problematic, and this makes sense because the classroom hits very, very close to home for our youngest students, and they are very engaged and excited in these activities. We also have an activity, a piece of curriculum from I to Learn, where fifth graders build and code a friendly monster, but in addition to that, they're really going to think of possible purposes for coding a friendly monster. For example, it lights up, so maybe that's something, a pillow someone needs, wants to keep near their bed to find their glasses at night, and really interview who they're creating this for and think about their needs and how they might create it so that it's usable and interesting for the user. In middle school, students are identifying a need and designing a prototype using the components of Raspberry Pi, which is a miniature computer. And in high school, students are researching to find a community problem that can be solved using data or an app, and focusing on an empathy and a felt need of the user in order to create that design. We will actually hear tonight from two students enrolled in that class. As part of this process, we have sent teams to the Harvard Conference on Design Thinking. This was actually a grant originated by Jennifer Forsberg and paid for by the Foundation, and here, they really talked specifically about the design thinking process, empathizing with your user, understanding their needs, defining their needs, you know, brainstorming potential solutions, prototyping, tests, and continually revising. It was very interesting for us, as Jeff said, you know, 65 percent of our students will probably participate in jobs that have yet to be created. There were whole teams of people there from industries learning how to rethink how they do things. My favorite piece was a group of insurance salesmen who now are realizing that you can actually go on an app if you happen to be diving with sharks and insure yourself for a million bucks for the afternoon, so the term insurance policy may not be the best way of offering products to their constituents, and it just made us, I think, really think about how our students are going to have to be able to think on their feet to redesign markets that are continually changing due to access to technology. And this language is very sophisticated for some, so in our group, we actually sought to revise that for our youngest students, so ask, imagine, create, and improve is how this language and process is being rolled out and understood and taught to our youngest of children. So I'd love to have two students who are participating in the app design class, Matt Crawford and Andrew Cargill, come, come up and talk to us a little bit about what they're learning now and what they anticipate doing in the spring.
My name's Matt Crawford, and this is Andrew Cargill. I'm a senior here at Bronxville High School, and I am a part of the app design pilot class. So I'd like to start off by saying I've actually attempted to quit or drop this class twice this year. It is, it's pretty hard because it's like, you guys probably all took languages in high school. It's like taking Latin IV when you have absolutely no experience. I had no experience with computer science, programming, coding, anything like that. After saying that, Mr. Ashley has convinced me time and time again to stick with it, and I really appreciate that from him, but he's also just given me countless amounts of resources, both on the web and in hand, to enhance my learning and enable me to take this class. Now, just to speak a little bit about this class, basically, every day, we, we sit at circular table, we code either half an app or a full app each day, working by ourselves, but like, it's, it's similar to a startup, and Andrew will speak to this, because say one of us has a problem, we just nudge the guy next to us or the girl next to us, and we just say, hey, how can you help us? And this is something Mr. Ashley is really looking to do in this class, is make it similar to a startup, so I think that's extremely innovative and will help us in the future. And then also, just speaking about the class, so currently, we're learning the language of SWIFT, how to code, how to build very, very simple apps, and when we get back from break, we'll be identifying a problem, hopefully working with the Chamber of Commerce in Bronxville, identifying a problem with them, and building an app to help them in some way, shape, or form. So thank you, and now this is Andrew.
Hello, my name is Andrew Cargill. It's nice to be here tonight. I wanted to speak a little bit on the atmosphere and the startup feel of the class, because this summer, I interned at a startup in which we were creating like a medical sensor along with an app, and I think that the collaborative effort and the innovation we have with one another as classmates, in this class particularly, is unlike any other classroom, where, you know, traditionally, you have a teacher up top, maybe have a PowerPoint behind them speaking to us and giving us a lesson, whereas this class is almost flipped on its head, where we're diving straight into it, and it's up to us to work with each other and work with those online who are doing the same things as us to overcome any obstacles we have, to answer any questions we may have, and to really, it really enables us to not only mimic the startup feel and atmosphere, but to collaborate and innovate to get back to the Bronxville Promise in, unlike, in a way that is undone in any other class. And actually, as someone who has previous experience with coding, unlike Mac, even not being a beginner, the class enables someone like myself or other classmates who have experience to be continually challenged, as it's not a set end goal, so we are able to continually push the boundaries, and that enables us, no matter your level of expertise, to keep learning and keep pushing the boundaries in the classroom. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah, okay, you're hired. Do you have any questions for these two gentlemen before we move on in the presentation?
I know you said that you have, you're going to talk to the Chamber of Commerce about potential issues out there. Have you thought of any that might be out there, any potential, or talk to them?
We'll do some time looking.
Yeah, I, there, we are looking with Chamber of Commerce, but just one I thought of, for moms in Bronxville, actually. Say there was like a more, less sketchy app than Craigslist to find babysitters, and you could rate your own babysitters by accessing data from like a cloud. It would be, it would be pretty awesome. And so, yeah, that's my idea as of right now.
And last year, with a fellow student, James Burnell, we took on an independent study where our goal was to actually make an app for the Bronxville School in which students could log in, and they would be able to display their classes for the day, the cafeteria menu for the day, and any additional, maybe if a teacher was absent or if there were assignments, it would all be displayed within the app.
Cool.
You're good.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so, you know, just, I mean, I don't need to say much more, but I will. You can see how, you know, this design thinking is taking shape here, and whatever they decide in terms of finding a problem, they'll have to work really hard to understand their user and then design something to help better their experience. I also wanted to just take a few minutes to relate this to some new standards. Next-generation science standards have been adopted by New York State, but the current plan is for districts to be building their capacity in terms of understanding them, and that is exactly what we're doing right now as part of this work. But it's important to note that the NGSS actually calls out engineering design standards for every grade, and we've been looking at some curriculum to sort of think about exactly what this means. And, you know, for our youngest students in K to 2, this is about, you know, understanding that in science includes problems that people want to solve, not necessarily original solutions, but, you know, consider a need or a goal and design something. So you might see kids designing a catapult, you know, from a simple machine. In grades 3 through 5, they focus more on defining the problem and developing success criteria, including identifying constraints. One example is designing homes for three little pigs with sand, water, and glue to fight the effects of erosion and weathering to determine which design might be best. In middle school, students must engage in design thinking by testing and revising a number of times and potentially combining solutions to create new ones. One example is designing a new process for copper plating. And in high school, students are to look for global problems with social significance and are expected to use mathematical and/or computer simulations to test under various conditions, and some examples might be designing solar water heaters or climate control mechanisms. So you can see how these engineering design standards sort of grow from early students' experience up to high school, where students are really defining their own problems with global significance and attempting to design something to help solve them. So without further ado, I'd like to call some students up who are in Justine Rutherford's Bronx River Research to talk about a water quality probe that they plan to design.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Clumpur, and this is Ben Von Marin and Jo Semenara, and we are students enrolled in the Bronx River Research elective, and this is actually my first year taking this class, and I heard a lot, I had heard a lot about the problems with the water quality of the Bronx River, and I did not really understand the extent of this until I started testing the water this year. And so Enterococcus is a protein that is found in the colon, and the level of Enterococ- Enterococ- And so Enterococcus is a protein that is found in the colon and the level of Enterococcus in a body of water for it to be suitable for swimming is 30 and the level of the Bronx River is 4,000. So it's really, the standards of water quality of the Bronx River are really, really appalling. And so, yeah. As, yeah. As Dr. Ketke discussed, the three of us and Jack Palermo, who was, couldn't make it tonight, have had the wonderful opportunity to be able to design our own curriculum in which we have the opportunity to build and code and bring together the components of a probe in which we can continuously test distilled, oh, sorry, dissolved oxygen, pH, and temperature of the water.
So some of the goals that we have for this probe, as you can see here, minimize time, work, and resources put into regular river trips. On average, I'd say that the Bronx River Independent Study probably went to the river once a week. The main point of this probe is so that we can put it in and just have it collecting data throughout months, so we can just have a constant stream. You know, changes in weather, like snowstorms can affect pH level. So we really just want to be able to see what is going on all the time instead of at one moment, at one point in a week. It's just really not enough data to make conclusions. We will be building this probe using coding and engineering and the fact that the four of us have actually been put into this group is pretty amazing because Evelyn and Jack both have experience with coding from last year's coding class that they took. And Joe and I have experience with hardware. He's, will be crucial when building the case for the probe. And I've actually built a computer myself, so I have experience with computer hardware, which is very important, obviously. And, you know, with our teacher, Ms. McClellan, it's just been, she's done a great job helping us from a biology standpoint.
So this is the outline for our probe right now. It's really just a rough draft. We haven't started to build anything right now. It's going to be out of PVC pipe and it'll probably stand four feet in the river. We project that we'll be able to build it over the next two months using different types of technology and different methods that we've never used before. I've been a part of this for three years now and we've never done anything like this. So this is a whole new process. So it'll be a lot of PVC pipe and we'll actually have it stay in the river for a while and we hope it can stay for over months at a time. The sensors that you see coming out of the bottom are pH, dissolved oxygen, temperature, and those will actually give us data for over a whole amount of time because we've only been able to get one data point a week. So to do this, we have to have a system that will actually have it stay there for a while because the water level actually rise three feet sometimes just in one night. And we can't let anything in that house get wet because it's all computers. So we actually want it to stay four feet out and the probes are actually really long. So no matter where the water level goes, we'll be able to test it. And we're hoping that while we go with this, we can actually find new ways to improve it because it's been done before, only once in Virginia. And other than that, no one else has ever tried it. So we're trying to see if we can actually make the whole thing waterproof so that when, no matter what happens at the river, say rain or just melting of snow can impact the water level so that it can actually stay waterproof through anything.
Do you have any questions that you're also hired? Do you have any questions for these students?
Yes. How, and then with that information that you get and when it works, how do you foresee that this will help in potentially cleaning up the Bronx River or making it less bad?
So right now, this is just going to help us see what happens to the river over like the night and day. We don't really know right now what is the problem with the river. Like we said, our Enterococcus levels are so high and we've been doing this for now four years and we don't know what it is. So with this, we're going to try and build it so that future students who take this class will be able to also improve it and then find ways to think of what could actually be polluting the river.
Right.
Have you shared the data with any government agencies? If that's something I'll do.
We have not, actually. Oh, well, the mayor comes, she sees it, but other than that, other than that, we haven't really contacted anyone else. But we, we're trying to spread the word. I mean, this river goes all the way up from Valhalla down through the Bronx. So we really want to get Westchester involved, which we've been trying to do, but they're not, they don't really contact us back.
Actually, I think Jim Palmer from the Village was at the presentation when you guys did it, when I, when I was there, you guys were in the lobby of the auditorium doing the presentation. And he was in the audience and he was very interested in, in learning more about the river. I think he talked about, you know, there might be pipes from homes that were built many, many years ago where their waste might go directly into the river. They don't really know. So he was interested in getting some of the data from you guys and you start collecting it as well.
Okay. Well, thank you and thank you very much.
Real problems and lightning. But as you can see from the kids, you know, we're engaging in some of this work right now. And I, I think without question, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Ashley, Mr. Brad Ashley, and Justine McClellan, who are leading these students in these experiences with very good outcomes. You know, innovation is not just for the students, it is also for us. So as an administrative team, all the principals, myself, Dr. Montesano, Jen Forsberg, enrolled for, in a course given through the Tri-State Consortium entitled Bold Moves for Schools: How We Create Remarkable Learning Environments Taught by Heidi Hayes Jacobs. And this has really asked us to sort of be more innovative about the process of school and how we design it. And as a result of that, we've been thinking of a number of things. One thing, as Jeff mentioned, is space. I mean, we are pushing the capacity of the space as we, as it's currently configured to its maximum capacity. And we really, as you heard, want these students to be able to work collaboratively, spread out, go to places where they can actually build prototypes and test them and have the resources to do whatever they can imagine and create, as well as have spaces where they can go to work appropriately and meet with classes as a whole group when necessary, but be also productive even in small groups as in individuals. Thinking about our use of time. Do we have the right time structures in place to do all that we want to do? In particular, thinking about, you know, some of the work we've done with TC. Do we have the appropriate time for our students to engage in reading and writing workshops? As well as have we configured time appropriately when students are meeting other challenges that sort of ask of them to do things that are beyond what we have asked before? Design thinking can also enlighten our processes for, from anything, from how we ask kids to register for classes. You know, we can think about the pain points is the term they use in design thinking associated with that and maybe redesign our process accordingly. And then a capstone course, you know, a lot of the things you've heard kids talk about are things that would be interesting for them to present to panels as evidence of the Bronxville Promise. And, you know, maybe even get some formative feedback and then come back for one or two more rounds of that. And what would that look like if we turn that into a course where students could actually find their own problem or work with a group to find a problem that aligns with, let's say, leadership and innovation and, and created something in order to address a need that they discovered. So all of these opportunities have been excellent for us as well as the educators who are in, who have these students in our care. It's been exciting and I hope we get to return to this, in the spring, to share some of the results. Questions for me? I can't answer any about X code or whatever that was.
Thanks, Mara.
Okay.
Wait, wait. John.
I have a question. I saw that the, the new course catalog for next year came out recently, maybe today, and there were some new classes, which I think are great, physical computing, AP, computer science. Are there, are there classes that you have in mind or subject areas that you have in mind that you're thinking about rolling out over the next couple of years that you haven't yet, that we haven't yet rolled out, that you're just sort of?
I think this caps, capstone course is potentially one of them. You know, could we pull something like this together in, you know, we now have kids doing this process in multiple classrooms and with multiple skills according to content area, but does it make sense to do, let's say, a survey course of the dispositions of the promise, immerse yourself in some of the literature associated with innovators, leaders, et cetera, and then choose a problem and solve it? That's been one idea. I think there are potentially some other ideas about adding more electives that are aligned to current disciplines where we have less electives. So we've been thinking about some of those things.
Thank you very much, Mara. It, it has to impress all of us considering how we were educated, sitting in there with a teacher in the front of the room, and how things are different. And it, and it feels so much like when people get their first job and they throw you out there and you're with a team and you're pretty much on your own to collaborate and develop and come to a conclusion. So I, I think that you can see how we are preparing people for that, preparing our students for that now, for college and for their, you know, for their futures. So it's changing so rapidly that it's just, it's just fun to watch, you know.
Yeah. The other thing I want to mention, related back to the referendum, and when we talk about the space needs and it's not about adding space, it's about re-engineering our space that we have. And so the more we have children involved in the research and collaboration, building items, you know, we, we truly don't have a space to do that kind of work. So it's about redoing some of the spaces that we do have to accommodate the new type of learning that we want to promote, especially through the promise. So, you know, it's, it's one thing to say, you know, we have 25 students, we want to put them all in a classroom, but this kind of work doesn't happen in rows with desks and chairs. It requires different thinking and different formation of space. So that's, that's what's really driving when we talk about innovative learning spaces. This is the kind of work that we're envisioning.
Can we move on to the, to Dr. Kelly, who was unable to be with us tonight? So Mr. Carlin's going to pinch it for her. You want to move to Dr. Kelly's report?
We have a number of items on the personnel agenda this evening. Items A through AE involve approving Family Medical Leave Act leaves and associated replacements.
So hopefully you've had a chance to look at those. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second? Are there any questions on any of A through E?
Yes.
Any questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. That motion passes.
I'll take the next grouping is F through J. Approving resignations and appointments of teacher aides, interns, and substitutes. Normal course of business.
A motion?
So move.
Now, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on any of these?
Second.
Second.
Any of you in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. That motion passes.
K and L involve changes in civil service staffing. We have a resignation of Henry Kendrick, who's been working here a long time. You know, we certainly appreciate all Henry has done for us. I understand he may be relocating. And L is an appointment of a database specialist to replace someone who recently resigned. So we're excited to have that in place as well. And then M through R, our co-curricular and athletics-related appointments, revised coaching and co-curricular rosters, and then the spring coaches roster.
And these are all in conformity with the newly negotiated curricular?
Yes.
Contract. Okay.
Move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions on K through R? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Thank you, Mr. Carlin.
My pleasure. You still get to stay with me.
Right.
The board has received a, a current year budget summary prepared by me and backing documents that show us in a pretty good shape as we enter. We're about forty, forty percent done with the school year if you look at it from September to June. And I'm projecting a surplus in a $450,000 to $500,000 range at the moment. And a lot of that's driven by revenues this year. You know, if Rachel was here, I'd, I'd give her kudos because our special ed tuition program is very successful this year. We're also exceeding revenue projections in our regular education tuition students and sales tax collections. So, and we're also going to get a little more state aid and, you know, all of that adds up with, I'm now seeing some expenditure savings in salaries and employee benefits. I anticipate that as we get further through the year, more clarity presents itself, that that number will increase. So I think we're in, we're in very good shape in the current year.
Okay.
Jeff? I have to go. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. And Merry Christmas to you as well. Oh, he's got his entourage with him.
He's got a posse.
So some people just come to, some people just come to see Curran, you know, and then, and it's, and it's completely understandable. I mean, there's no more entertainment now, tonight. Okay. Next is the, we have financial action.
Before I get there, I'll continue my underwhelming presentation by letting everybody know that the New York State Comptroller's Office is now camped out. They're doing their, once every five years, our turn is, is now. We expect them to be in for a couple of months. We think we do a good job, but if they think there's anything we can do better, you know, we certainly welcome it.
Dan, are they looking at anything specific or is this general?
No. They come in, do a general audit. If they find anything they want to target, they'll go dig deeper on that.
They'll start with a risk assessment, similar to what our internal auditors might do.
I'm meeting with them Thursday.
Okay. I met with them the other day. Then they will, they'll do a risk assessment, then they'll select, I don't know, how many areas, a limited number of areas to go deeper.
Changes from district to district. There's no real hot items at the moment.
We have had no significant major recommendations from either our auditors or internal auditors, which we have every year. So, but we'll see how this goes. Any other action item?
Well, I'm going to talk about the budget development first. We're near, I've nearly completed the first budget draft, which will be out by the end of the week. This is for the 2000, I guess it's 1819 year. We still have a few open items, final teachers' retirement system rates, state aid projections, and the inflation figure for calculating the tax cap. I, I'm expecting the cap to be over two and a half percent since the municipal inflation number was very close to 2% and our assessment growth factor, which we get from the state, which is a variable in the cap calculation, was about 0.7%. So I think that'll get us over two and a half percent as a cap. And then the board over the next few months will decide exactly where they want to be.
But the retirement or- But the retirement already is, has a significant impact. How much of, how much does that pull off of that?
That, off the bat, that's probably close to two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, which is probably about?
Close to one percent, three quarters of a percent.
Under one percent.
So there, we have, you know, we do have the numbers for next, for next year for retirement, right?
We, they give us a range.
Right.
We budget at the top of the range. When the final numbers come in, we'll reduce the budget.
So that would be the equivalent of if retirement were the same, it would be, say, one, one point seven five percent cap.
Yep.
So, okay.
So that's one of, one of the issues we're dealing with this year. I do have a couple of financial action items.
Please, go ahead.
The first being a donation from the Bronxville Youth Council, which is dissolving to offset costs incurred by the youth council, which we have taken over in the Bronxville School. There should be another donation when it's officially dissolved after the new year. This is just an initial disbursement of twelve thousand dollars.
So this was a separate fund, funding mechanism, and then these were contributions that had been received. It was, at, at some point was, it was also a community fund entered, we got contributions from the community fund.
Yes.
The school took it over and now it's dissolving and it'll be the school so that whatever's left in essentially the fund balance will?
Will come to us to offset costs over the program. The, the second is?
Are there any questions about?
Is the nature of the program changing with the, with the change of?
No.
Why the change?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Why is it being absorbed by the school?
Why, and why, why did we have to take over the youth council or?
Well, I think that the, so many of our students participated in essentially work that we wanted to value in school communities, really the value that students created service opportunities in the high school.
Well, the community fund stepped up and said, they didn't feel it was appropriate and they thought this was a school activity and that it wasn't a typical kind of health and welfare in organizations the community fund would fund, you know, with their, so it, so we have it. So it came back or we could dissolve it or not have it. And so I think that was the other major source of contributions. And so that was a community fund decision to bring it back into the school and I think that was appropriate.
And the, the other item is a, a small foundation grant from the Jackson Designated Fund for Performing Arts of nine hundred dollars for dance workshops for middle and high school musicals during the current school year. So I'd ask the board to accept both of those donations.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any motion and a second? Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carlin.
Moving on to facilities, the bid is out for the, the library project and due back before our next meeting in January. There is news that the schedule has been revised. We thought we were going to have to close the library at the February break. We've moved that now to the April break, so that's good news. And it's my understanding that, that will not impact the end date of the project. So we're happy with that.
So you still think it's going to be completed before the new school next year?
That's the goal. You know, again, it's a hundred year old building and, and the library hasn't really been touched in a long time, so you, we never know what we're going to find behind some walls when we start taking them down.
So why are we pushing back the start time?
It's, it, because they can't really do much. We're, we don't, they can't work during the school day because of the impact it would have on the classroom surrounding. So to have them work those five days isn't really much of a gain for, to have it sit idle.
Five weeks, you mean, or?
Oh, yeah, it sounded, it sounded like what you said, it was going to be five weeks.
What I'm saying is the five days that they gained by working in the February break.
Oh, got it. So when are they going to start working full time?
Full time when school's out, but they'll, they may work a second shift beginning in April.
I thought they were pushing back by weeks.
They can't do a lot of intrusive work over that period. They can do, you know, they can come in on April break and do as much demo as they can and then do some, some low key work perhaps during the school day.
We just heard you say, thank you.
And then we heard about the capital plan earlier in the meeting. And then the last item is a facilities action item. We heard back from the historic preservation regarding our planned capital project coming forward, that there's no adverse impact from the perspective of historic preservation. And there's action items related to the environmental quality review. There's a required resolution to close the review process and declaring that there's no adverse impact, which is, is the case.
So nothing for us to approve there?
Just the, the environmental quality review resolution.
Okay, the resolution, okay.
It's a?
That's the resolution there.
Rather long.
And I think there's an authorization for Connie to, to fill out an affidavit or something.
Yes.
That's the resolution.
Like a notarization of the fact that we're doing the resolution.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion to approve.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? All, all in favor?
No, 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 give it to her.
This side, we're winning on, on.
We're down people.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, any opposed? Okay, that passes, thank you very much.
The next item is also mine as well. Policy review, second reading on the investment policy and the, the reason we're, we're updating it is to include recommended language, which has been approved by council, to help generate yield via cooperative investment opportunities, dealing primarily in treasury bills, notes and the highest quality commercial paper. But we'd be really targeting treasury instruments of probably liquid within a week because we, we get two huge tax payments during the year, so we can, we can tie up some money for a week. Right now, we're in, in bank money markets, we're getting about seventy basis points, anywhere from forty to seventy basis points. Checking with interest is less, it's less than ten basis points. And we feel we can get one ten or one twenty. So it's, it's an opportunity to easily double our interest income without any, any additional risk.
Sounds like a good plan. So this is our second reading of this. This has been approved by the finance or audit committee or?
Finance committee.
Finance committee looked at it, council has looked at it.
Okay, great, so.
And we're required to look at it as a board every year.
Right, so do we have a motion to approve? So we have a motion and is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any questions, final questions on this policy? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Carlin, that passes. And our next item is, says here merger of the girls volleyball. Is that Karen or who is handling that one?
Yes, so we've been, we've had quite a bit of interest in girls volleyball in the middle school and some in the high school for a number of years. We do not have the abilities to have a competitive sport in either one of our teams right now. So we've, for three years, looked for a school to be in charge with at the varsity level. We have a couple of varsity caliber athletes that play club right now because we don't have any school offerings. And we've been, have not been successful with that. And this year, we're, we've made some connections with Mount Vernon and they're considering having us merge with them at the varsity level. So this would start those discussions with your approval to see if we can't place a couple of our girls on their varsity team. I don't think we'll do JV and modified at first, but we'd like to allow these young ladies in place to play competitively.
That's great.
Okay, any questions? Do we, is that an approval, Connie, for us or is it?
Yes.
Okay, this resolution, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion?
Second.
And second. No questions?
So is this an annual thing we'd have to redo every year?
We're hard to keep up with, Connie. We have so many people that are, you know, jumping forth and, so.
Engage group tonight.
So this would be an annual approval until we get our own volleyball team. Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, thank you, Karen. Okay, that concludes the formal part of the meeting. And now we'll open the meeting up to public and remind everyone, this is particularly directed towards agenda topics, but not personnel matters with respect to, or matters with respect to individual personnel or, or students. So is there anyone in the public who would like to comment for the meeting? Okay, with that, I have a motion to?
So move.
Adjourn, we have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Meeting is adjourned.